Nine o'clock.
All right, sir, we have, we have four things to talk about today and we have to be done by nine fifty-five. So we have a couple commissioners with a commitment on, with these bank legacy people. Most important thing first, Kate's going to talk about Hat Day tomorrow. And then we're going to talk, the sheriff and DA and corrections are going to talk about, give you an update on the Odyssey software adoption. And then Dave, you're out here to talk about a modification, potential modification to special assessment policy that he wants to, that the chairman actually brought up a couple weeks ago, we want to brief the full commission on. And then if we have time, just giving update on news conference tomorrow at one thirty in Concerns to Spirit. So with that, Kate, let's talk about hats.
Yes, tomorrow is National Hat Day and so we're going to celebrate at the commission meeting. If you would be willing to wear your favorite hat, at least during the beginning of it. And then we'll also have different hats from agencies here around Sedgwick County and promoting what, what some of our employees do on a daily basis, what some of the hats they wear and then promote our career website. So tomorrow morning, if you would like to participate, it's National Hat Day and so we'd like you to wear your favorite hat.
Break that fire helmet out again. Okay, Sheriff, DA, or who's going to take the charge on?
Good morning, Commissioners. Dave Mattingly, Colonel with the Sheriff's Office, I'm here on behalf of Sheriff Easter who is sick today. We do have a number of speakers. I will give the order, we will have Wilma Sanders and Ellen House. Justice Attorney Mark Bennett, Glenda Martins, Carl Wheeler, myself, and then Greg Gannon, speaking on the Odyssey issue that we are going to be facing very quick.
Good morning.
Good morning. I am Wilma Germany, this is Tina Harrison. And Ellen, we are standing here on her behalf as well. I am the IT Director for the Eighteenth Judicial District and I'm sure you've heard concerning Odyssey and the challenges that we face, not only as a court, but our stakeholders as well. We were asked to talk about how we actually work within full court and how the changes will immediately affect the Eighteenth Judicial District and the processes that, the way that they currently exist. The way we currently utilize full court for our stakeholders is we have user IDs for our stakeholders. And the IDs that they have currently, they are able to review images, they are able to review data because we have and we provide user IDs for them. The way Odyssey is currently built, that ability is going to go away. The challenges we face are not just with the access levels that our law enforcement agencies desire and their level of access, which is what they are fighting with the policymakers in Topeka right now. The challenges that we face are three and four dimensional in nature. When it comes to a project this large and this size, it's three and four dimensional. We will deal with change management issues. We will need facilities to be able to facilitate our war rooms, which we do not have room in this building to do that. The stakeholders will be faced with budget challenges. Those budget challenges include purchasing technology that will be robust enough for them to be able to work inside of Odyssey without performance challenges. In addition to that, the limitations of Odyssey, even if the law enforcement agencies purchase modules that will enable them to view images or look at data. We, we went to another county, Ada County, to see how they have fared because they have actually rolled out Odyssey and they are comparable in size to Sedgwick County as far as the number of crimes and the number of images and documents that they have in their system. They have spoke of the challenges that they face and the limitations that Odyssey have. We are not here to embellish our truth and scare you guys into helping each of us fund certain things that we need in order for this transition to be as smooth as possible. We are relaying the truth as we know it. The policymakers have not made decisions concerning the level of access that our law enforcement agencies will receive. But again, it doesn't stop there. We have challenges ahead of us, even if they gave us every wish of giving us the level of access that the law enforcement's need to effectively and efficiently do their jobs, we would still face challenges of needing more technology. The Eighteenth Judicial District, we have already spent over $250,000 replacing current equipment to make sure that it meets the specs, the technology requirements that was in the RFP that Topeka and Odyssey spoke of. We had to upgrade our version of office licenses, which cost us an additional $151,000. We've replaced the imaging for our court trustee and social files. And we have to purchase public terminals and the cost, the reality of having to add more staff is a real reality that we face as a court and as law enforcement agencies. And we need the support, not just from the area of technology because we also have to deal with being able to take care of the people who will be driving this. Ada County lost 90% of their staff when they went through the change. So this is not just about technology. This is about human beings driving this and being able to take care of their needs as well. And so we are working closely together as a court. Judge Garing has encouraged us to review our current processes. And the biggest purpose for a war room would be to be able to strategize and come up with alternative ways of doing business. It took us over two decades to be as efficient as we are as a court and partnering with our law enforcement agencies. And so if we want to maintain that level of performance, we're going to need funding.
Let me ask you a couple questions real briefly. First of all, you said access. From what I understood, when we had a conference call, that they were going to provide us the access. Are you saying now that they won't provide the folks that need the access to Odyssey, the access you need to do your jobs?
Well, when we talk about access, it's, they have different tiers and different levels of access. From what we've been told, unless somebody else can chime in and say different, we have been getting updates, but the updates change as far as what we are needing and we being us and our law enforcement agencies as far as the level of access. Because if they give what they initially stated they would give to us, which was public access for our law enforcement agencies, that does not give us access to images that they need and protective orders and warrants. So if that has changed, can anybody speak to that?
As far as access goes, the folks that we're speaking to about access, and I know you were in on a conference call, actually you got that conference call set up for us with Justice Biles. The decision makers are saying they want to provide the access. The people we are having weekly conference calls with are the project manager and the state IT folks. They are not the decision makers, but they are on our side. They agree that we need a higher level of access than what we were initially told. Initially, we were told, you're not getting anything. And the access that they're talking about providing us is enhanced level access to their web portal, which would be for querying information. The second would be an interface, developing an interface to where we can move appropriate data fields into our system, which is preferred. The issue with the sheriff's office is we cannot do that until we implement our new records management system, which we do not foresee going live until probably second quarter of 2021. So we will, that will not occur. All we will have up until that point is the enhanced access through the web portal. And hopefully the decision makers do grant us the ability to make an interface to where we can have that additional level of access. And I don't know.
Well, I've been promised that we'd have the access that we need. So if we're not, we need to be able to work that. Second of all, RMS, that, that's really a separate problem than Odyssey. So we need to work that as quickly and as efficiently as we can. But I can't go to Odyssey, folks up there and say, hey, because we don't have an RMS, we can't do this. So I think we're mixing apples and oranges right now.
To some degree, yes.
Very good. The next question I've got then are the modules. I understand that you have to have modules and our IT folks are going to have to work with you to get the modules. Is that not happening so that you can get the modules to be able to interface with Odyssey?
The real issue that we face right now is we've been put on hold. We are seven months out from our go-live date, which is August. And we have been told in meetings and through email correspondence that we'll get you that information in two weeks. And two weeks have, has turned into two months. And so we're kind of at a standstill. The IT people at the county and the IT people at the Eighteenth Judicial District are working closely together. But if we don't get approval, we can't move. They can't even begin to build the APIs.
Okay, well, we have to have those, those APIs to make this thing work. If we're not getting the specifications to be able to develop those, we need to know here so that we can go and exert pressure with Justice Biles and say, hey, we're not getting the information we need to develop the APIs. So you've got to tell us if that's what you want us to do or not.
That is what we need you to do.
Okay. The third issue that you brought up was the technology that we have here. We're going to, we need that to get into our budget cycle as quickly as possible. So you need to work with, with our CFO and the folks in finance so that we know exactly what you need for the budget. We, we understand it's going to take more technology in order to make this work. So those were the three main issues I picked up. Was there another issue that you have that we need to work?
Well, one of the things is we, we need to, Ada County suggested that we build a war room. And that's a place where all of our stakeholders can meet. And, and again, I have to stress that it's, it's not just about level of access. It's not just about being stalled on whether or not we're going to get that access. It's, we have to put some, we have to deal with change management on a very high level. We're going to have to change the way we do business simply because we're moving to a new case management system.
This war room, I guess I don't really understand what that is. Is this a temporary facility?
A temporary facility for us to.
And what is it needing in this temporary facility? Computers, is it people?
We don't necessarily need computers, we need chairs, we need places where we can post things on the wall, just a place where we can strategize. And everybody that is involved, all of the stakeholders, it will be frontline staff that will be going through these processes and finalizing our alternative processes. Because another thing that we face with this project is they told us that we will be in the different phases of go-live for Odyssey for the different counties. We will go down, and go down meaning for three or four days. We will not have access to the Odyssey system. So we have to come up with ways to continue our processes and keep our processes moving without that technology.
Tanya, are you aware of what their needs are for facilities?
I don't, I'd have to get, I'd have to get some more information about what size of room you need.
Okay, well, if we need to do something, we need to work with Tanya for this. So we've got the staff here, that's what we need to know at the board. What, what kind of support do you all need to make this thing happen? Is there something else that we're missing that we need to provide?
Probably understanding that if we come back and tell you that we have more needs, some of the needs we don't know. We don't know what we don't know.
I understand. Very good, Commissioners, do you have any questions? Very good, next speaker then. DA Bennett, welcome.
Morning. I spoke to the sheriff this morning, he's homesick, so I'll try to include some of his thoughts as well. Just to back this up a little bit, make sure we're talking about the same, the same information here. We've got two things right now that my office, the sheriff's office, and the other stakeholders, community corrections, court trustee, et cetera, that they, how they interact with the current full court system, which is the RMS that is currently in place for the state court system, OJA runs. And it's going to be data, which is pulled into, into our systems for our various needs. And then documents, we need to be able to look at documents. So to give you an example, it seems maybe counterintuitive that the district attorney's office would need to have access to divorce cases. Why do I care who's getting divorced and I'm not a party to that? Why would I need access to that information? Well, there are decrees within, in a divorce decree, there are orders that the judge will issue. You can't have contact with her, you can't go back to the house, it's her house. You know, the kids are yours on X number of days. And having access to those orders is important for my office because if there's an allegation that one party violated that, that could be a violation of a protective order, which is a crime. So I have to have access to the document, be able to download it, see what it is so I know whether a crime occurred. For law enforcement's purposes, they need to know in the moment, at three o'clock in the morning when the cop shows up at the house, was there an order in place? Not just a PFA or PFS, because that's, that's a separate issue altogether. But that was a, did the judge say in the divorce that he gets the house or she gets the house? This is her weekend, his weekend. Because any number of crimes could arise from that. And so what cops use is what's called Spider, it's a, it's their officer, deputy or patrolman will call in and say, what's going on here, they'll have access to that information. So we in law enforcement need to have the ability to see documents. In addition, we pull data into our, our individual RMSs. So we have what's called Justware in the DA's office. Both the county and my office internally did their own assessment of things, just to make sure we were on the same sheet here. But we pull about 50,000 data points a month, just in my office alone, from the current system. So that is, there's a subpoena that's issued. Here are the witnesses that are endorsed in the case. There's a contested preliminary hearing set two weeks from now. I don't need to sit down and have a human being type out a subpoena for all six witnesses for that prelim. It is automatically generated. And we automatically generate about 100,000 subpoenas a year. For us to sit down and literally type that out, you can just imagine the amount of manpower it would take to do that. And so we certainly don't want to lose that. We do the same with subpoenas. We have constitutional statutory obligations to notify victims of pending hearings. And again, all this data that gets pulled in helps us generate without additional human resources being impacted. It'll generate letters, it generates subpoenas, it generates, you know, any number of documents and helps us run our office more efficiently by pulling data as distinct from viewing documents. So that's just, I wanted to, for two minutes, unpack what it is we're talking about here. As Wilma pointed out, we have over the last several decades increased our efficiencies exponentially, year after year, by, first of all, improvements in technology. We can do things now that we could not do when I first came to this office, or certainly when I first started practicing law. I remember when we got email in the office, it was a big deal. You know, I was actually able to send emails to attorneys in town instead of just picking up the phone. It was a tremendous cost saver. It seems silly to go back to that, but from that point to today's point, we have increased our efficiencies exponentially. The concern we have, and again, I'm not here to be hyperbolic or to suggest that the sky is falling, but we, it seemed like it was time to make sure you all were at least in the loop on this. Chairman Dennis reached out to an old acquaintance of his, Justice Biles of the Supreme Court, and we had a very good, robust conversation. I have no doubt that he believes and, and will do everything in his power to ensure that this office, that this jurisdiction, Eighteenth Judicial jurisdiction, gets all the information it needs and has, and I believe him when he says, you'll get all the access you need. Like most things though, it, the devil's in the details and the working it out is the, is the, is the issue. And that's just in any human endeavor, especially something this monumental. That being said, in the moment, right now, there are mechanisms by which we will get information, same as we have in the past. We get direct view of documents. That has yet to be worked out. We can have enhanced access so that we can, through the public portal, have levels of access higher than just the newspaper a citizen would. For instance, in a PFS or a PFA. Why would, why would we need, again, something different than the public has? Well, if you want to go see a PFS, here's nineteen, you know, MR whatever number. And I want to see the PFA, I want to see what the protection from stalking order looks like in that case. Anyone can go to the clerk's office and ask for a copy of that, they will give it to you. But the victim's name, her address, but date of birth, et cetera, will all be blacked out because it's private information. That doesn't do me much good. If I'm going to say that somebody violated that and there's a crime to be generated from that, I have to have that information. So having an enhanced level above me on what the public could get is important for me to run my office, for the sheriff, for corrections. I mean, again, here, Glenda's going to get it momentarily, but she has people on probation. Are they, are they in compliance with their terms of probation? Well, one of the terms was don't have contact with the victim, don't see her anymore. If there's a protection from abuse order that was issued showing that she did, Glenda needs to know that, to determine whether or not that person's still in compliance. The API that has been discussed, and I think that's generally the mechanism by which we're going to have more direct access to the information in this new system. So, and then one other thing I want to point out if it wasn't clear before, full court's what the state has had for, I don't know, fifteen, sixteen years, probably longer than that. It was time to update it and so they put out a RFP and they ended up going to Odyssey. They didn't not stay with, with full court, they went to Odyssey, a different technology. Their prerogative to do. The problem we have here is we could say, we could slow roll this, just give us two years. I can tell you anecdotally, when we went to Justware, which is the RMS system my office uses, it took about a year to end negotiations to get everything we wanted for them, just to get the contract signed because we would go back and forth and I need this. And it was a year of that negotiation within our office. Then it was about a year of, this isn't working quite right. And they would, you know, had direct contact with the vendors, technology folks to make sure, and they worked with us. It was about a two-year rollout for us to go live and be efficient. And then there was, there was another, you know, months and many months of us internally making sure everything worked efficiently. What I prefer to do is just slow roll this thing out for the next year or two or three until we can make it all work. The problem is, as has been pointed out to me, full court is no longer going to be supported. Now, that's the current system. And at some point, an unsupported data management system that is as large and robust as full court is, isn't going to last forever. So there is an urgency to this. And what I'm getting at is, I don't know, I'll echo what Wilma ended with, which is, I don't know what we're going to need. Cross my fingers that we don't need anything from you. That strikes me as being unrealistically optimistic. I think at some point, we're going to have to come back to you and say, here are some things we're going to need. And I'll give you the final and wrap this up because I know time is of the essence this morning. But she mentioned Ada County several times, that's in Idaho. We talked to them because Boise, that's, they are a like-sized city. We talked, I talked to their district attorney, Ms. Bennett, who knew, anyway. Didn't know her. And she talked to me and I won't say that she gave a very rosy picture of their experience. That being said, every experience that, that company has, you hope they get better and learn from the mistakes of the past. But there was a period of time for about eight months where, for instance, over there, they literally had to hand count inmates in the jail every morning, noon and night to figure out who they had because they had no access to data management within their jail system. That can't happen here. I mean, we are too big and we have too much going on for that to be realistic. And we have statutory speedy trial and any number of things, and lawsuits followed in that jurisdiction. So using that as a cautionary tale, we know where we don't want to be. And again, I'm not suggesting that that's where we're headed here. But she's walked us through and the, and the IT folks and the, and the, I know David and the folks at the sheriff's department have had contact with their respective colleagues in Ada County. But there are some things that I think from that experience, at least, we need to at least kind of have a worst-case scenario. We have to prepare for the fact that there will be periods of time when this system is not going to work, either in the internal or, excuse me, initial implementation or maybe, as Wilma alluded to, there may be times when another major city gets added to or another jurisdiction around the country gets added to and there's a period of time, hopefully it's a three-day weekend, but there's a period of time when there's an inaccessibility to their system. Worst-case scenario, you asked for four things that were discussed, or three things that you kind of were your takeaways, Chairman. I'd add a fourth, and that is human resources. If we have to go back to paper, if we are no longer operating, even for a period of time, in 2020 technology, but we're going back to technology, which is literally paper, that's how we're going to run our system. We, the only way that works is more human resources. We will need more clerks. If I can't access the information I need digitally, sitting at a table, excuse me, sitting at offices downstairs in my office, I will have to have runners going up and back and forth to the clerk's office, having them print from their database what I need. I, again, that sounds kind of hyperbolic, I'm just being realistic with you, if that's where we end up, even for short periods of time. Because we don't have the ability to take a day off or, you know, a weekend off. Someone is arrested this evening by Supreme Court, United States Supreme Court, case law, Riverside decision. I have to get in front of a judge and have that judge review the documents that were the basis for the arrest and make charging decisions and make bond decisions so that people are not held unlawfully or held too long. Or so people aren't let go too early when they should have, they owed another day or two or a week, you know, on a judge's order. And so there's a human resource impact potentially for this. The other thing I was going to say with respect to Ada County, I, you know, I said, well, how long was it for you? Okay, I got the bad, what's the upside, what's the good part of the story? Are you working okay now? She goes, it's, we're getting through it, yes, okay. Three years, three years on. What did you do to get to, in that position? She said, we finally had to buy their RMS. Tyler Technologies, which is the parent company that sells Odyssey, has a prosecutor module as well, our prosecutor's RMS for an internal prosecutor's office. I don't need that currently, to be candid with you. I've got a very good, robust RMS that runs my office very well. But if I can't get APIs to interface with my existing, with theirs, I may be in the situation she was in, which is finally, after a period of time, I'll be in a position where I have to just buy what they are selling so that it works more efficiently. And if that happens, I won't have the ability or the luxury of coming to you in March and saying, I need this next year. I need you to, you know, put this on your August agenda, approve it in the fall so that I can have it the following January. I will need it next week. And that's not a position I like to be in or I'd like to put you in, but it's also something I think you are better prepared to think about now, in the event that it comes at some point. I will do everything I can to telegraph this to you so we can put it in a normal budget cycle. But that's really at the heart of why I think we're here today, which is to give you a heads-up about things that might happen. We're going to do everything we can to work with the stakeholders and up to and including the Supreme Court, who are, you know, been very supportive and, and working with us on this. But this is a tremendous undertaking. It affects 104 out of 105 counties in the state. Johnson County's the only one that's been exempted from this at this point. And so when you take on something this big on such a short turnaround, we've got, it's supposed to go live in August. Our go-live, our initial go-live date here, just in, to get things up and running, was February 28th. Well, that's never going to happen, we don't even have the APIs yet, so we could even begin. But if we're really going to set a goal, or if the goal has been set for us of August, there's a lot of work to be done between now and then. So that's the information I wanted to get in front of you. Again, you know, I think if Justice Biles were here, he would restate what you already alluded to, that they are committed to working with us. We're the largest jurisdiction in the state in terms of, not in terms of population, Johnson County outpaces us a bit there. But in terms of our input into the criminal justice system, we're far and away the largest. Nobody can afford for us not to be effectively and efficiently run, OJA included. But there's a lot of work to be done between now and then and I just, it was time to bring you in the loop. Any questions?
Very good. Questions from Commissioners?
I want to say thank you for the presentation. I think urgency is received very well here. And we like to always know what the worst-case situation is. I think you've done a good job, you know, describing that. If they do the right thing and provide the right access, it seems like that's the issue here. So if they give us the right level of access and do that sooner than later, how much of this fear is eliminated at that point?
So we've got kind of two things going on. You've got OJA, who is the policy setters for the sets for the state of Kansas. And then you've got Tyler Technology, who provides the tech, the tech side of this. Policymakers will say, this is what our system would look like, we have, you know, this contract with you, Tyler, make it happen. So you've got to, first of all, make sure the policy folks are on the same sheet of music with us. They seem to be, yes. Now they're going to make sure, can it work? And so there's still a bit of a hiccup in terms of making sure. I mean, what they're trying to do is set up a system that works across all 104 counties. And my only pushback there is what works in Rooks County, and no disrespect to the good citizens of Rooks County, with their 10 to 15 felonies a year is interesting. I need a system that works for the 3,500 felonies we file here. It's a different system, I'm sorry, it's just different. I'm sorry, it's just different. They're trying to wrestle, policy-wise, for the state, what do they want this to look like? Do they want a Cedric County model that, you know, works for everyone, it's kind of like, you know, this is the luxury liner here for Cedric County. There may be a bunch of empty rooms when other, you know, counties use it, but I can't afford not to have something that works for us. There's a policy-level discussions going on right now, to figure out what's it going to look like for the state. Then the next thing is, making sure the technology can meet that policy set by the state. The worst-case scenario, to answer your question, is there's a window when the technology has not caught up with whatever the policy that's set. And does that mean we're not able to continue to do what we're doing now, for a week, for a month? I don't know the answer to that.
Let me ask the question differently. So let's assume, let's say that the policymaker in Topeka to agree that they need to give us the right level of access. Who makes the APIs? Is that something we, Wes does? Are we buying that? How's that happen?
I'll defer, yeah, I don't want to get out of my skis here, but the, my understanding is, first of all, we have to have it given, the specs come to us from Tyler. They'll tell us how it works, and then it's up to us to build it. Am I, Greg?
Greg Gann. Right now, we are working with DC-18 Municipal Courts, Wichita PD, and all of our stakeholders here, Sheriff, DA, Corrections, to evaluate what information we do have at this point. What limits us is the fact that we don't know our level of access yet. Will we get the access? But we do have information. We're able to look at the data streams that's coming across and find specific points that we do need to address. Speedy trials is an example, due process. We only have so many days in which to prosecute, and there are starts and stops for that, and we're determining where those clock points are in that data. We're doing everything we can up to that point. We are poised, as soon as we know what our level of access is, to create the necessary interface. An API, as we've learned with Odyssey, could slow the system down, as every time they roll counties in. We have to plan for that. There's another thing that's called the integration publisher. It looks like that would work on triggers that will help us. We're trying to find the best method of giving the DA, the sheriff, corrections, everybody involved, the level of access they need within what our rights are given. We're doing everything we can without knowing what our level is.
I guess I'd like to approach this and say, I'm going to assume we're going to get the right level of access.
That is our presumption.
I think we're going to have to demand it, and they're going to have to hear us, and I think that has to be the answer. But assuming you get that right level of access, I mean, is a half a year of implementation time going to provide enough time for you to do what you have to do?
Our other request, aside from access, has been, can we be last in this process? Give us as much time as possible. As the DA has eloquently said, it's going to take a year to negotiate. It's going to take another year to work through the details to implement, and we're going to continue to course correct for a very long time. You know, Ada County in Idaho is still at it, three and a half years into the game, and they've had to change course a number of times. It is not an easy lift.
When does full court get non-supported? What's the date for that?
It'd be by the end of 2021.
Well, it's not that full court necessarily is going away, or we won't, as full court as it currently exists, we, we're spending eighty thousand dollars a year on maintenance. And most of the people who have our version of full court, because now it is legacy software, have gone from the vendor. And so we no longer pay that eighty thousand dollars a year. What that eighty thousand dollars a year does is allow us support. We no longer have that, plus we have an aging imaging system. So while we might need to push it back, for us being last in line, we're dealing with a double-edged sword here. Because if that system fails, we're dead in the water anyway.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. All right, Mark, I appreciate you giving us heads-up. I think what we're probably going to need to do, from the manager's point of view, is we need a little tiger team put together that has all of the staff in it, and all of the people that are impacted by the new Odyssey software, to tell our staff what we need, and then the tiger team can feed back to the board what we need, if we need more people, if we need more equipment, if we need to go back and talk to Justice Biles, whatever we need. But I think we're going to have to have our experts from HR, finance, IT facilities.
I think that's the genesis of the War Room idea that Odyssey, or that Idaho suggested, get that team together, have a place where they meet, where they keep their notes from the last meeting up, and, you know, sort of thing. They found that useful.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Glenda?
I'm not going to take up much time, because I think Wilma and Mark certainly presented a very good image for you folks about what we're really tackling, and it's a tough tackle, because the fact is, they have not made a decision on access, and they've sort of kept saying, oh, next week, next week. Again, we're at, it's supposed to be this week. That's what I'm having conversations with the IT people at OJA, and that's what they are still telling us. And so that decision has not been made yet, so that we can move forward with whatever next plan needs to be. I can only tell you, from the corrections standpoint, that, I want you to think about this number. I serve sixteen thousand five hundred and ninety-two clients in 2018, and that number is going up in nineteen. It went up in nineteen, I don't have the exact number. But that's the number of clients that we actually had in community corrections, that we got into full court at some point, and had to review their case, or what was going on in that case, to be able to do our job. And that does not include prevention programs. This are just strictly adult and juvenile cases. And so when they talk about public access, and they talk about Odyssey, public access works in some form for adults. There is no public access for juvenile cases. And I'm running a juvenile detention program, and so there is a lot of communication that occurs between the courts, and my detention facilities, and my staff, to give the level of service and get kids out when they're supposed to. And so we're real, I have a lot of staff that are very concerned about kids staying in detention longer than they're supposed to, or clients serving longer times in jail than they're supposed to. And there's a bit of this hangover that says, hey, what does that mean for lawsuits? And I will tell you, if you do some online searches, that you're going to see other states that are being sued for that very reason. And it's because of the Odyssey. And so that's a deep concern. So I don't want to, everything else that's been lined out is true. We're meeting every week, we're trying to work together, but until OJA and the decision-makers make a decision on access, we are sort of holding. I know that we're building breaking points. Every time that my staff, or any of the folks, had to turn to full court, we're looking at, well, if we don't have access, what would we do? And it's going to put pressure on the courts. It's going to cause my staff to have to call judges constantly. It's going to take up more of their time. It's not going to be very pleasant or helpful, and it certainly isn't going to be efficient or effective. So it is a public safety issue when you're talking about corrections and the people that we monitor out in the community, and it is going to have an impact, so.
Very good. Well, thank you. And we've been promised that we'll have access. The question is, how do we convert that access into something that we can actually use? How do we interface that with some kind of module, so that we can get the data in and out that we need? Rusty?
I might say very briefly that conversations, the DA and sheriff, and Glenda, Wilma and her staff, have all been talking to the IT folks, the OJ folks in Topeka, and they've been getting reassurances that, since they provided statutory authority for access to the information, and provided everything that counsel for OJA has asked for, they're being told that, promisingly, they believe that we need all this access, and that they're going to try to get it for us. One thing that keeps falling through the cracks is that they focus on the DA, they focus somewhat on the sheriff, they begin to forget about community corrections, the court trustees are a state entity, and it's unclear whether they see the need for them to have the access. So as the conversations continue, we do need to be mindful that we don't let any of our criminal justice partners who are vital to the constitutional rights of those who are accused, or who are incarcerated, that they don't lose out because we don't have access. Additionally, the largest law enforcement agency in the state of Kansas, across the street, if they do not have the type of access that they've been able to have through full court all of these years, then they will task the clerk's office as well, trying to get records, paper records, for their detectives. So there's multiple layers here that have developed over decades to make this efficient, and we need to make sure that none of those fall through the cracks on us.
Okay. But I understand that, but when the folks in Topeka, or wherever they're putting this thing together at, don't give us that access that we need, that's when we need to know here. Because Justice Biles promised us that we would have that, and he heard from Glenda when she was on the conference call, he heard from each of the different folks that were on the conference call, and he promised us that we'd have the access we need. So if that doesn't happen, that's when we need to get involved. But up to that point, we need the staff to be figuring out all of these different issues that we can solve here locally. Because I don't want to go up to Topeka and say, hey, you got a problem up there, and they say, no, you didn't provide this to us. So we need to make sure. That's why I think we need this War Room, or Task Force, or whatever we've put together, to make sure that we've done everything here. Because I don't want to go up to Topeka and say, hey, you guys aren't doing what you're supposed to have promised us, and they say, oh, yeah, we have. You haven't done what you need to do, okay?
It was discussed last week that perhaps the next step this week would be to put in writing from the DA, the sheriff, corrections, and the other stakeholders here at the county, these are the conversations that we've had by phone, here's our understanding of what you're telling us that we're going to get, and then have them confirm back in writing that we're on the same page. Because everything has pretty much been verbal at this point, since the conversation with the Justice, with Justice Biles. So I think that there's some intent this week to draft a letter capturing those verbal conversations, and making sure that they confirm what we understand they've told us so far.
Very good. Okay, Sheriff? Sheriff's Office, have anything else?
We did have one other speaker. You know, I've got eight pages of daily use as a full court. I think we've made that abundantly clear, but I wanted to go back to my statement about RMS. It is a completely separate project, but my point I was trying to make there is, we are being told from Odyssey that the cut-over date for Zone Two, which is our zone, will be September first. So between September first, and then whenever we get our RMS, that's going to be that gap we're going to have, where we, the sheriff's office at least, will not have an API. We will not be receiving data into our records management system, because our current system is unsupported, and we don't want to spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build that API with a system we're getting ready to get rid of. But we are working through those protocols, what reports we need to have populated and sent to us on a daily basis from Odyssey, so we can still manage to do what we need to do. But I agree, the information provided through that API, that happens, clear sailing at that point. But we're not concerned about that. It's just that interim gap.
But we can't lose track of the fact that if you have to go to do everything manually, it may cost us more than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if we have to build an API on something that's a legacy system, it may be something we have to do. It may be cheaper to do that than it will be to go over to Sheena and say, hey, I need fifty more people to do all of this stuff manually.
Could be, and we're working through those details.
Good. Did you have somebody else you needed to speak? I'm sorry.
Carl Wheeler? No?
What I said was already covered. Really what it is is that, you know, inside we can, we have, it's our intent to, sorry.
We're working with our partners to ensure that we're planning for all outcomes, knowing full well that sheriff is going to have a gap, knowing full well that there's a considerable amount of information that we don't know how we're going to solve the problem to. We're essentially resetting the clock, and when full court goes away, we have to give back to our partners as much of full court as we possibly can. So it's encouraging from the state level, but until we have something in writing that determines our playing rules, we're doing the best we can.
Okay. Well, after the manager gets his task force, or tiger team, or whatever we want to call it, War Room put together, we'll need feedback if that group comes up with walls that they bump against that they can't break down, that we're going to have to break down for you.
Thank you.
Okay? Very good. Anything else?
No, sir.
All right, well, thank you. We truly understand that there's a problem, and we make sure that we need to work from our level to help them.
I want to, okay, Dave, or Justin?
Good morning, Commissioners. Dave, you're out with the planning staff. This item is, we'll keep very brief. It started with a conversation that came through the chairman, passed on to the law department, passed on to us. The issue is questions about, within the subdivision regulations, clarity of how much is available if special assessment financing is considered by a developer. Brief policy issue within the regulations is the fact that, okay, Kate?
Is the arrows?
I am, and they're not operating.
Try the spacebar then. No?
The subdivision regulations have language regarding what is required when a developer proposes any plat. And that includes, within the Section Eight, that through the Engineers Department, they've got to articulate the cost of the improvements that are required, and they've got to provide some kind of guarantee that'll happen, either, as it's noted here in the fiscal securities, bonds, we'll take cash, we put escrow accounts together, and irrevocable letters of credit are used. That's pretty standard across the state. The other alternative is to petition, to create a benefit district, and that's done at the time of the plat presentation. There has to be some details of what, some detail that is going on with the improvements that will be required, and dollars that are going to be involved with that. And they can petition to create, and ask at the time the plat is approved, to create a special benefit district to make those improvements, and that's outlined in the regulations. What it doesn't really get into is how long financing is available. The current policies within the county, and I'll let our finance folks discuss that if they need to, but primarily it says, yeah, we do twenty-year bonds on projects, but in the county, if it is a special assessment for an improvement in a subdivision, fifteen years is the max. Now, the city will do up to twenty years, and I know Commissioner Meister knows that well, but the policy has been here, fifteen years max. There is the ability on approval by the Board of County Commissioners to extend that out longer. Statutes will allow it to go to twenty years, but the policy is not to do that. So the question became, should there be something articulated and more visible within the subdivision regulations where that policy would be more visible, and it would be known? So there is the potential that we could amend the regulations and add language that, if a petition is presented for a county subdivision, and the intent is to use special benefit districts to finance the improvements going on in that subdivision that are permitted to be financed, that generally they'll not be longer than fifteen years, unless there's specific action taken by the county at the time the plat is approved to run that longer. And I know, in the earlier discussions within our, within our folks, and all the years that I've done this across the state, it's not always advisable to put hard numbers in the regs, because you're dealing with a policy statement regarding what the options the board does. These are regulations. If you put it in here, then it becomes a regulation. It can be changed. It can be changed, but we've got to go back through the same process with notice and hearing and a whole bunch of stuff to change what effectively is a policy that you don't want to just flip, change policies across every week. I know that. But it's a question of where's the best place to make that visible and make that knowledgeable to folks that might be coming in. There are things in the regulations now that give multiple opportunities for every developer to know precisely what's going on. And I'm not sure whether we've, some things have fallen through the crack or people have not always passed that information on. But, you know, for example, if I'm developer and I've got a project, I've got to work with the Engineers Department, with either David or with Jim, to really get very detailed of what we're doing and provide engineering costs and specs of what's going on so a dollar number can be placed that is clear in the very beginning. Okay, I know how much money we've got to create to make the improvements in here, and if I'm not going to provide a fiscal surety and if the option is a petition, then that's, I want to articulate that in, and I've got to know that upfront now, whether we've not really clearly communicated that, well, yeah, the county can bond that, but it's only going to be a 15-year payout and not a 20. You know, I go back long enough to where everything was 10 years once upon a time and nothing ever happened longer than 10 years. But that law changed because the cost of everything changed. And so that's kind of what the issue is. The real question becomes, to amend it into the subdivision regulations will require an action by the governing body to initiate consideration of an amendment to the regs or the Planning Commission, that are the only ones that have the statutory authority to trigger an amendment to a set of regulations. Same like on the zoning regulations, that we'd have to have either the governing body or the set Planning Commission agree to start that process. The staff doesn't have the authority to do that. So I guess the question would be, does the board wish to pursue the idea of adding additional language in the regulations, or do we find another method to get that communication out better? That's a decision the board has to make. And if the answer is no, we want to put it into the regulations, we'll have to come up with the language, and then a subsequent time would take a vote of the board to start the process to go through. So.
Yeah, well, the problem I ended up with in my district is we've got a new development that's going in in the district. It's already gone through the zoning process, it's gone through the plating process, and then once it got to the point where they were engineering the roads that needed to go into this facility, the cost of this development, and it's just a mile from where he did another development recently, the cost of putting those roads in is double what it was for the previous one. And that's due to a lot of different reasons. But, so he ends up with a problem that he's got a property that he's already zoned, platted, developing. But as he moves forward with this, because it's 15 years to pay back putting all these roads in, the cost of that, because it's 15 years, is going to be so high that he can't sell the lots for this piece of property. And so he goes back and says, hey, can we do it for 20 years instead of 15 so that we can make the lots more saleable out there? And as time goes on, it may happen again. But right now, there was nothing that really cued that developer to say, hey, our policy is 15 years. There's nothing in the subdivision regulations that says that our policy is to bond it for no more than, no more than 15 years. So what we suggested when I met with Legal and with Public Works and with Planning is that we do put something in our subdivision regulations that says, hey, the county will generally do no more than 15 years. Now, we may come back to you also and say, hey, can we do 20 on this one property and allow him to be able to move forward and not go bankrupt because they did not realize that he couldn't go 20 years. So this puts the developers, if we put this in our subdivision regulations, this puts the developers on notice that, hey, if you're going to develop it, know what you're doing ahead of time, don't invest a ton of money in this thing, and then find out that you're not going to be able to sell the lots. So that's why Legal came up with the idea, I'm pretty sure it was Legal that suggested this, that we clarify it in our subdivision regulations and says, hey, the county's not going to do this. So that's what we're asking today, is it okay with the county to add something to our subdivision regulations that says the county is not going to be providing bonding for more than 15 years so that we don't have this occur again? The problem with this one, it's already gone through plating. And this would stop that plating. He wouldn't get this far if he said, hey, I can't do it for 20 years. I'm not going to plat this, I'm not going to zone it, I'm not going to do anything. Anyway, my request is, hey, can we change it, put a quick thing in that says that it's generally? And when we say generally, it means that if something happens out there and they want to come back to the Board of County Commissioners and Lindsey tells us that we can do this financially to bond it for 20 years, then we can still do it. It's not hard and fast, but at least it puts the developers on notice that they're probably going to end up with a 15-year bond.
Makes sense to me.
Okay? Is everybody happy with that?
Tell me, so I know that most of the city developments have been 15 years, right?
Yeah, obviously. And I know the builders will tell you the objective is to try to get no more than X dollars per lot for specials in the sale and to make them continue to be marketable because loans that gets improvements in the whole nine yards, so.
But I'm saying that although the city allowed up to 20, most of the developments in Wichita have been 15.
Yeah.
Correct?
That I don't know because I haven't worked here long enough. I know across the state, it used to be 10.
Yeah, I got that. How many times a year do we have developments that are in the county jurisdiction?
Well, lately, in terms of the number of classes that come through, a good number of them have been in the rural areas. Now, they're not normally large, and they're not creating multiple lots like you do in the city with urban development. But there are occasionally ones that happen in the rural areas, and once you start putting internal roads, the developers, you know, they've got to create as many lots as they can because it's, that's what recovers cost, so.
All right. This change isn't going to fix the development problem right now. It's going to stop us from having this problem in the future.
I would just say, I think, Chairman, I think if you use the word generally, you might as well just change the number to 20. Because I think the reality is that the word generally means that that's not really a cap. They're going to go to whatever number they need to go to. If they're putting a equation together and they need more than 15, they're going to know they can get more than 15. I think the word generally isn't really so much of a purpose. I think it ought to be.
Our bond council doesn't really want us to go to 20.
I don't know that I want to either. I like 15, I just think it needs to be clear. So I support the idea of being clear in the subdivision regulations, I just think it needs to be 15. I don't think there ought to be caveats to expose the county to 20. I think 15's enough, especially, city special assessments typically include a lot of things I don't think that generally are put in county subdivisions, you know, hydrants and streetlights and things like that. So the reality is that the special assessments are smaller anyway.
Curbs and gutters and storm drainage that you may not do in the rural areas.
So if the city can make it work for 15 years, I can't imagine that, you know, generally talking about asphalt streets primarily in the county, that they can't find a way to make that work with 15. And if they, if they, if they need 20 to make that work, then I think the reality is it's putting a lot of, a lot of burden on the county, and if they don't sell those lots, we're on the hook. And I think it's just exposing us needlessly. They need to put an equation together that really makes sense in 15, in my opinion.
Mr. Cruz.
So I'm going to need more information on this. I didn't really understand, I mean, for me, in the future, if we could have a context, if you could have given us your reason for having this first, would have been a little bit easier for me to understand. So I would love it if we could maybe explain the reason why we're even being briefed on this in the future. That would be very, very helpful, I think. I'm probably not the only one in the room that would, could benefit from that. So for me, I'm a very visual person. I'd like to have this, I'd like to sit down with you and explain it to me rather than, you know, making a decision right now on this. Because quite frankly, this is a lot's taken in one 15-minute section.
Commissioner, just what the regulations state, because I think Public Works ought to be at the table and probably Finance as well. Because we do go through the process of handling the paperwork to go the rezoning route and to get the plat approved. But the design of actually the improvements requires to go through the engineers. And so Jim or David, I think, ought to be at the table and say, yeah, this is the kind of information, it's got to be put together. And, you know, why this particular project fell off the table, I don't know, because honestly, the regulations say they should have done that before they ever got to the point you guys saw the plat. So what happened, I don't know, on that particular case. It's immaterial. It's water under the bridge right now.
Well, first of all, I don't want to go to 20 years. As our bond council tells, it's a bad idea.
Agreed.
Okay? So that's not my goal here. My goal is to stop future developers from moving forward and getting it all the way through the plating process, because by then they spent a ton of money on this thing and then find out that they can't afford to do it. Somehow, we have to stop it. If we need to say instead of generally, say that it is limited no more than 15 years and take the word generally out, I don't have a problem with that either.
I support that.
Yeah. We'll work on that. Yeah, go ahead.
And Chairman, just to that point, I'd say, I'd have a little heartburn about adding that in the subdivision regulations because it'd be inconsistent with what the state law would allow you to do, and you'd essentially be tying your hands or future county commissioners' hands, because the state law does allow you up to 20 years. And so I understand the point. I think both you and Commissioner Howe are making that the generally language is squishy. The thought would be that that language would be there, like you were saying, to put folks on notice. But, you know, if you added 15 years in there and a developer ever came in and said, well, can I do 20? I mean, the right answer is yes, you can, because the state law allows it, and as long as the Board of County Commissioners says yes, you'd be able to. So I'd have a little bit of heartburn about our subdivision regulations not being lockstep with the statute.
All I'm trying to do is put developers on notice that 15 years is what we really want to go with in the future so that they know before they start spending a ton of money getting this property ready to go and then find out that they can't sell the property.
Well, I can assure you, when they come in and make the initial application, we talked to them pretty hard about, have you really thought this thing through?
Well, we've got one sitting out there right now that is sitting there.
Chairman, we'll do some further briefings with you all, then we'll put it on an agenda in the future and drive it to a vote.
Well, go ahead. I just, something I just thought about, I guess. The point is to get the early notice out there, and I'm wondering if we could just amend the subdivision regulations to make a reference to the county's policy. So that the policy becomes, stays something that you can amend at will, but it just, if you're working through this subdivision process, you would see a reference to go look at this other policy instead of having it in both places. And I was just throwing that out there to think about.
So the reason why this came up is because we have a developer who's having an issue with selling his lots?
He's not going to be able to sell any of them.
Okay, so, so my question is, I guess if they all go through the same rigorous process, why is this person having a problem when other people? Do you see what I mean? I guess it's like, everybody has, everybody gets the same information, it's what they do with that information that really should be on them.
If I could maybe expand on this particular, we might have got a little bit of a misunderstanding. When we do these rural paving projects, yeah, the city has a lot more layers of special assessments, but because of the lot sizes that we're dealing with, these things are very expensive. And so if we were using a policy similar to the cities, which says you go to 20 if you meet certain financial criteria, it's just that expensive based on the value of the home or whatever. If we were using that kind of a criteria, most of these would fall into that category. They would be expensive lots. I don't have a real argument with this particular developer's, what he's trying to do, but we have, he has a choice in this particular case because of the lot size, he could not pave the road and still do the subdivision. So he's trying to get into a place in the market. He wants pavement to sell the lots, but he wants the cost of the pavement to be reasonable to sell the lots. And so we're, you know, that's kind of, that's on him to kind of figure out where that is, but that's kind of, that's kind of where a little stuck. Almost every project that we do for rural paving is expensive. They're $25,000 a lot to get this done, which is pretty high. But that's kind of the market they're working in. Not really relevant to this, but a lot of what we actually get in conversation with people about are existing subdivisions that want to go to paving. And so we'll probably do, prepare more petitions, have more conversation with those people than we do with people like this particular developer who's trying to do a new subdivision, get paving in. They come up, but it's, we don't do a lot of them. But I just want to get maybe the context of the cost. It's expensive.
All right, we'll let the staff work it and brief the commissioners.
Good sir. We are past time, so I will send an email out regarding the plan for Spirit tomorrow.
They're having a briefing tomorrow?
They're having a joint briefing, county-city chamber, kind of briefing at 1:30 tomorrow. I'll get you details on that.
Is that on our calendar?
No, it is not. We'll put it on there.
Okay. Very good. Anything else, commissioners? Nothing, staff? Okay. Good work. Thank you.